The Tuesday, October 20, 2020, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to this evening's meeting. We have just a few people in the audience COVID-ly distanced, thank you, and wearing masks. We appreciate your attendance and your adherence to the COVID expectations and rules. Just a quick, brief announcement about open podium. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government prior to each city council meeting, which are typically held on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Open podium is held from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. We have a couple proclamations and presentations this evening. Mr. Getcho, Sustainable Eden Prairie Awards.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. We're really excited to present to you our annual Eden Prairie 2020 Sustainable Awards. It's worked on by our Sustainability Commission, and I'm going to introduce Jennifer Hassabrook, our Sustainability Coordinator, and she will lead us through these awards for this current year.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name's Jennifer Hassabrook. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the city, and I'm pleased to present this year's Sustainable Eden Prairie Awards. This is the fourth year of the Sustainable Eden Prairie Award Program. The award recognizes businesses and residents who have made significant and innovative investments that contribute to the overall sustainability of our community in the primary focus areas of energy, landscape, water, and waste. This year's nominations were accepted through the month of August. Nominees must be a business or resident of Eden Prairie. The awards were reviewed by staff and then presented to the Sustainability Commission, who selected this year's winning nominations. Tonight, we have five award recipients, and we have some of our student Sustainability Commissioners here with me tonight to help present. So with that, I'd like to invite Anisha Singhatwadia to introduce our recipients in the waste category. Anisha?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anisha Singhatwadia, and I'm a student commissioner serving on the Sustainability Commission. And the first waste recipient we're going to be recognizing tonight is Girl Scout Troop Number 17913 for their school supply recycling and repurposing program. Three years ago, the 10 members of the troop realized that all the school supplies left over at the Eagle Heights Spanish Immersion School at the end of the year were going into landfills. So they worked with their principals, teachers, janitorial staff to collect all crayons, markers, pencils, and even erasers. Then the materials were sorted and processed. Crayons, pencils, and markers that were like new got sharpened and donated to schools in need and local women's shelters. The old markers were then sent back to Crayola to be recycled. Unusable pencils were repurposed into bird feeders. They also removed paper from all broken crayons and turned them into fire starters for camping, which they then sold those fire starters and donated all the proceeds to help other Girl Scout troops buy supplies for their gold and silver award projects. Troop Number 17913 is estimated to have diverted 300-plus pounds of school supplies from the landfill over the last three years. The troop has also participated in the city's annual park cleanup and have adopted the Richard T. Anderson Conservation Area as their mission. So with that said, with the representatives from Girl Scout Troop Number 17913, please come up and accept your award.
That's great work that you did. We're all proud of you. Thank you.
And the second waste recipient we're recognizing tonight is Once Upon a Child Eden Prairie for their reuse and recycling program. So far this year, Once Upon a Child Eden Prairie has helped locals' families reuse or recycle 95,286 units of children's clothing. And the representative from Once Upon a Child Eden Prairie was unable to attend this evening to receive their award, but...
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Jennifer up to the podium to introduce our first Sustainable Eden Prairie Award recipient in the landscape category.
Our first landscape winner this evening is Sherry Now. Sherry Now has been instrumental in a number of sustainable landscape and water quality projects at her own household and at citywide projects. At her home, she's converted one-third of her grass to native plants, installed a rain barrel and two rain gardens. She's also received a grant to implement shoreline restoration projects and removed over 2,000 buckthorn plants. As part of the Mitchell Lake Association, she helped get grants to implement nine shoreline restoration projects on Mitchell Lake. In addition to all of this, Ms. Now is a master gardener and has taught several summer classes for youth at Eden Prairie Elementary. Would Sherry Now please come up and accept your award?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Next, I'd like to invite Eliann up to hand out a couple more awards.
My name is Eliann Rutzloff, and I'm a student commissioner serving on the Sustainability Commission. Our second recipient tonight in the landscape category is the Preserve Association. Through a partnership with Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, the Preserve Association has been working hard on installing native plants, using goats to remove buckthorn, and converting turf grass to low-maintenance prairie grass. This work improves the look for the entire neighborhood and provides examples of sustainable practices for the entire community. It also allows a wide variety of wildlife to flourish in the area. Would the Preserve Association please come forward to accept your award?
Thank you very much.
I think the goats was a great idea, and I heard nothing but positives about it, so I hope you'll continue that in the years to come.
Come April, Mr. Mayor, they'll be bad.
Excellent.
And finally, we will be recognizing Fairway Woods Condominium Association in the water category. Fairway Woods Condominium Association installed a rain garden and native landscaping to stop erosion of their property into Purgatory Creek. The rock and deep roots of the native plants help the water infiltrate into the ground instead of washing sediment into the creek. Would the Fairway Woods Condominium Association please come forward and accept your award?
Congratulations, all of you. Thank you. Jennifer?
So in closing, I'd just like to say congratulations again to all of the award winners. Thank you to the student members who helped me present tonight, and thank you to our Sustainability Commission, who helped select the winners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do as well. All right, we have some contributions to receive this evening. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have a few events coming up here in October around the Halloween season, and as you know, we've been trying to have as many COVID-friendly park and recreation events as possible. So we have two events coming up. This Friday is the first one, the Great Pumpkin Path Event, an outdoor event with pre-registered households. And then we have, actually, on Halloween Day itself, and you're all very familiar with the huge Halloween at the Mall event that we've done over many, many years. We weren't able to do that this year, but you heard from our Parks and Recreation Director that we were able to find a new COVID-friendly event called a Boo Drive-Thru taking place at Miller Park. So we were able to receive some donations from some local organizations, adding up to $2,400. We received $1,000 from J.A. Price, $750 from the Eden Prairie Crime Fund, $200 from Wal Trends, $150 from A to Z Rental, $100 from Lyons Tap, $100 from Prairie Bluffs Senior Living, and $100 from Homestead Senior Care. So we would ask that you accept the resolution or pass the resolution accepting these contributions.
Just a comment. One of us makes this kind of comment every time we receive these donations, that city tax dollars do a lot, and can do a lot, but they can't do everything. And so every time we do get donations like this is so appreciated, and it allows us to do even more and take some of our activities and expand on them, so we deeply appreciate them. Council, is there someone that would make a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $2,400 for the Boo Drive-Thru and the Great Pumpkin Path Events, from J.A. Price, $1,000, Eden Prairie Crime Fund, $750, Wal Trends, $200, A to Z Rental Center, $150, Lyons Tap, $100, Prairie Bluffs Senior Living, $100, and Homestead Senior Care, $100.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We also have a proclamation tonight, recognizing World Polio Day. We have, as many of you know, all of us, well, so many people know, we have just a whole lot of nonprofits in our city that are so important and valuable to the culture here in Eden Prairie. And two of those organizations, it's one, but it's meeting in two separate times, is the Rotary. And there's a morning Rotary and a noon Rotary. And the Rotary in general, I won't say, in fact, I think we have a Rotary representative that can say more about what they do with polio. But there is a proclamation that we're, I'm going to read this evening and then have someone from, I believe, maybe both of the Rotaries here tonight, I'm not sure, come up and say something.
Well, three of us council members are also members of the Eden Prairie AM Rotary.
Right. Great. So all of you can speak as well if you wish. All right. Here's the proclamation. City of Eden Prairie, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe, and whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and is it GAVI? Or GAVI-GAVI, I'm going to go with, the Vaccine Alliance to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease, and whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than United States dollars, 2.1 billion, and countless volunteer hours to protect more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents, and whereas in Rotary, in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to this effort, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary members in more than 35,000 clubs throughout the world, Eden Prairie has two of them, that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. And whereas the Eden Prairie Noon and Eden Prairie AM Rotary Clubs support local service projects in Eden Prairie, as well as international service projects, including Polio Plus, and now therefore I, Ron Case, Mayor of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim October 24, 2020, World Polio Day here in Eden Prairie, Minnesota, and encourage all citizens to join me and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Ronald A. Case, Mayor. Could I have one or two or whoever's here come up and receive this, and then if anyone would wish to make a statement?
So Mayor, you can turn to one of your fellow council members and present them with the proclamation.
I won't shake your hand, but...
Right.
Thank you. And as well, I neglected to mention, city manager Getcho is also a member of our Eden Prairie AM Rotary, so we're well represented here.
Kind of like everybody but me, I think, but I'll have to work on that. All right. Okay, I think we are down to the agenda. So any additional items that any of you wish to have on the agenda that are not there? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes. Any questions you have about either the workshop or the council meeting held back on October 6? Okay, if not, could I have a motion to approve them both?
I move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, October 6, 2020. City council meeting held Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Consent calendar. Any of the items that you had questions about, might wish to pull, vote on separately, anybody? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar A through K?
I move to approval of items A through K on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have, I should have looked here, we have three items under our meeting. So first is the 2020 Special Assessments, which we do this meeting typically each year. So I believe, I'll say I'll turn it to Mr. Getcho first, and then you can move it on to Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. You'll see in the packet that this is the time of year where we levy various special assessments from throughout the year. Any development projects that were occurring, so you'll see a lot of utility assessments for developers, for developments, but also tall weeds and grass removal that the city may do, tree removal that the city may do, and any major road improvement projects that we have. So you can see the full list. Probably the highlight for this year would be the second phase of the Eden Prairie Road reconstruction. And so we've got some assessments related to that, and I believe we have some, well, I do know, we have some residents that have filed some objection in writing that we have and will provide to the city clerk as well in process as it relates to that road project, and I think we have some in attendance tonight as well. So knowing that that project might be the highlight of the assessment hearing, Mr. Ru is going to provide a brief presentation related to the Eden Prairie Road construction and assessments, and then the council will need to hold a public hearing and then adopt a resolution to levy these assessments that will then go to Hennepin County.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Getcho. Mayor Case, members of the city commission, city council. Before I kind of go into the details of this assessment for the second phase of Eden Prairie Road, I'll give a brief history of kind of where this project has been. This project was started in 2001. The city council ordered a feasibility study to look at the area south of Riley Creek, where Eden Prairie Road was, and that was an area ripe for development at that time. It was kind of the last large area of Eden Prairie that was due for development. At that time, for the next 10 to 12 years, there was very little support from the neighborhood to move forward with Eden Prairie Road improvements. That kind of changed in about 2012. So the report was actually, after several meetings with the neighborhood, we finally brought the report to the council and presented that in August of 2013, and the first phase of that project was ordered. That project was completed in 2015, and assessments were levied in 2015. Also on tonight's agenda, you'll see, or on that special assessment exhibit, you'll see some exclusions from that first assessment. So as is, but the policy of the city, our assessment policy, homesteaded residential properties, where they are existing homesteaded properties, and we bring a project in front of their property and provide them lateral benefit, we exclude them from assessments for the trunks and the lateral benefit for up to five years or until they connect, whichever comes first. So these parcels that are on tonight have not developed and have not connected to their sewer and water services. So then the exclusion now kicks in, and now interest will begin to accrue on that assessment. At about that same time in 2013, the council ordered a feasibility study for Phase Two, which is the section where the other project we're dealing with tonight, which goes down from Frederick Place down to the bottom of the hill at Flying Cloud Drive. During that feasibility study, the Lyons Tap submitted a petition to have sewer and water brought to Lyons Tap. So if you recall, there was a discussion at the council on how to best serve that, and it was determined to best serve it through Eden Prairie Road project. So that report was finished with the idea, or with the concept of providing service to Lyons Tap. That went down, the utilities went down Eden Prairie Road and served Lyons Tap. That project was ordered, the second phase project was ordered in February of 2017. The project is now completed, and we're now here to levy the assessments. Part of the project that we, the reason it took three years is there was a, this project was coordinated with the Flying Cloud Drive project that Hennepin County was doing, so we wanted to close Eden Prairie Road at the same time that Hennepin County had Flying Cloud Drive closed. Like I said, that was completed this year. The assessments for tonight are for street and storm sewer improvements for about 600 feet of that, of Eden Prairie Road, and it's for equivalent 28-foot street. The street is actually 32 feet wide, but we assess for the equivalent residential street for the properties that would take access to it. In the feasibility report, the estimated assessment for street and storm sewer was estimated at $16,640 in 2017. The final assessment amount, once we've got the project completed and looked at the final numbers, that assessment amount, I should say, went up to $17,465. And primarily, the increase was due to some inflation, but also there was additional storm sewer that was included in the project that wasn't anticipated with that preliminary estimate. The $17,465, some of that assessment is levied and some of it's deferred. Again, our assessment policy for the city is, if you have a larger parcel that has development potential, you get assessed for one unit of assessment on your homestead parcel, the first half acre, and then the balance of that assessment gets deferred with interest until development or connection. Basically, development, because there would be no connection to a second unit until there's a subdivision. And that $17,000 includes the construction cost for that 28-foot street, 600 feet long. In the storm sewer, it also includes 25% for engineering costs, 9% for an admin fee, and then we did not include any interim interest, basically because the project was, it came in over budget by about 5%. This methodology that we use to determine the final assessment roll is the same methodology that was presented in 2017 with the feasibility report. And you, it may have on your, in front of you, a golden rod. There was one amendment that we discovered today that the SAC and WAC fees for Lyons Tap need to be adjusted. We assessed them for 14.25 units of residential equivalents. The city policy through the Building Department is to only use whole numbers, so we reduced that to take away that quarter of a unit. So there's a slight reduction, I think of about $1,300 on Lyons Tap's SAC and WAC fees that are in the exhibit. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, and I have some detail if anybody, if there's any questions from the residents.
Counsel, it's your pleasure. Should we open up the public hearing, or do you want to ask any questions prior to that?
I think we can open. Let's open public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to address the council? If so, come to the podium, give your name and address.
My address is 10-100 Eden Prairie Road. I'm one of the special assessments. I mean, really, just a comment more than anything regarding the assessments in totality. I totally understand the sanitary and water one. Mr. Ru walked me through that. But since the improvement on Eden Prairie Road, there's been a huge uptick in traffic of people using it that suggests it might not conform to residential street standards, which I think that these assessments assume. So when the traffic volume increases beyond what is considered normal by local residents, or the speeds increase, which they do now because there's not that abrupt curve that was on it before, social street activities are greatly reduced, and local residents feel threatened on their connection to there. And I understand the empirical numbers. I totally get it. It seems super straightforward, but it begs the question of whether they're fair in the light of the other bad part related to the improvements. Does that make sense? So the suggestion or the takeaway, I suppose, is I think there should be a revision of it in light of that, maybe something else, but that was my view.
Great.
Thank you.
Someone else, anyone else to address the council on this item? Hi. Name and address.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Walter, 10065 Eden Prairie Road, also one of your specials for the evening. And I wrote an objection, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be here at this point in time or later. And Ron probably will keep me straight at some point. I've had the benefit of being assessed multiple times for this particular project, Phase One and now Phase Two, and I simply ask that we do a special review of my property so that I'm not doubly taxed, because that's how I'm feeling. To be honest, there are iterative assessment documentations that I've gone through since purchasing the property in 2016, and it is a brain teaser, to be short, to understand what's going on, and I have paid quite a bit. I cleared my assessments in 2019 to the city of what I inherited when I bought the property. Now to be faced with more on my residence. So we don't have to have conclusion at this forum, but I do ask that I have a special review before I am formally assessed again. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Ru, do you want to respond to that in terms of what our precedent is and what has happened, and directly to her request?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, this, Ms. Walter has a unique situation in that the project limits for the north phase, the first phase and the second phase, kind of bisected her property lines, her property frontage, I should say. kind of bisected her property lines, her property frontage, I should say. So she was assessed, actually, the property is transferred since the original assessment on the north phase. She bought it probably about the same time that those were going through. So the, and that the property that she purchased was also subdivided. Can't remember the name of it, Whitetail?
Whitetail Bluff.
Whitetail Bluff, yeah, thank you. So it was split into two lots, those, both of those lots, her homesteaded property, and then there's a vacant lot to the north that's been split. So those, under the first phase, there were two lots potential. So one was assessed, which she indicated she's paid. The second lot, which is a buildable lot that's out there currently, has a pending assessment on it whenever that property gets built on. The assessment for tonight is for a potential third lot, which, based on the property and the location of the house, it's probably very unlikely that that will ever happen. But in the frontage and the size of that property is sufficient to have a third lot in. So the assessment as tonight is a deferred assessment for that third lot. If that third lot never gets built, this assessment never gets paid. So that's kind of the situation she's shown as an assessment, but it's not a levied assessment.
Explain how that works, though, with accruing interest and then at resale in 30 years, what that looks like, or is it a liability on that piece of property then?
Well, Mayor and members of the commission, or council, the last year about this time, we passed, or you guys, you passed a resolution that capped the amount of interest that can be accrued on a deferred assessment. So now we have that in place, which the maximum an assessment can go up is twice the amount of the original assessment. So if it takes 50 years for that third lot to come about, the $17,465 would, no more than double, so it'd be $35,000, whenever that is, that would be the max. And that's, that has been brought up in many projects in the past where some of those assessments, or those, that interest can outdo the, can become a very heavy burden, especially when those interest rates, some of those old interest rates were maybe 8%, 10%. It didn't take long at all for that to double or triple. So that assessment policy, or that resolution that was passed last year is retroactive to any deferred assessment that's still out there from 1980 or 1990, whatever. So we've had a couple of those that have occurred, that people have come in and wanted to split their lot, and they had a deferred assessment on. Again, that's capped at that, twice the original amount.
Okay. Councilmember Freyberg.
I have a quick question of clarification. No, it's not levied, this assessment. Does that mean it's pending? Which could be a critical thing on title if she sold the property, a pending assessment. That's a problem as far as because my experience is, and my background is real estate, could be upwards of one and a half times an escrow setting aside if it's just hanging out there to clear that title. It's something that should be looked into, because if the property's not subdivided already, and then you've got, of course, then you've got two lots. You have one lot here, either way you look at it, just because it's large and it could be, you know, subdivided. Has anything been moved forward and ever attempting to subdivide it?
No, actually, if I may, just for you to run it up. When I purchased the home from the Thompkins, there was a ghost line on Lot Two, which creates the potential for what Rod is describing as Lot Three. When I remodeled my home, which was a significant project that I did, I crossed over said ghost line. It's not possible. You cannot, you can no longer make Lot Three.
So it's, you have two lots?
I have two lots, Lot One and Lot Two. Both have been assessed.
And there's nothing really here that says you have Lot Three?
Correct.
It's just maybe somewhere.
Correct. Also, I believe Duncan cleared Lot One when he sold it to me.
I think my-
So there are no pending assessments on either Lot One or Lot Two.
My problem is the term pending assessment, because if it's not levied, it ends up being pending. Tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, the way pending assessments work, so an assessment is pending once you have approved the project, but before the assessment actually gets levied. So back in 2017, or whenever it was, when you approved the project with these anticipated assessments, then it's a pending assessment. As of when you pass this resolution, it is levied yet deferred, so it won't show up as a quote pending assessment on a title search, as I understand it.
This is something I'm going to need to have in writing, because to your point, if I do sell this property, I do not want to go into a title search problem. We had a lot of title search problems when I bought this property, and Rod, Rod and I spent a lot of time together. So it's a very complex situation, and I just need clarity, and more importantly, I need to not be taxed again.
Mr. Rue, can I ask a technical question here that once-
Thank you.
-her home did get an addition put on it that crossed this potential line, is it the city's opinion that there's still enough room if you move the ghost line, in essence, to create this other lot? Or crossing that ghost line, has she now invalidated the possibility of having a subdivision?
The way she, when she put her extension on the property, or on their house, it did extend further south and probably eliminated that third lot with the current house. We tend to look at the absolute future.
Tearing down the house.
It's a very nice house, it's not coming down in the next probably 50 years, but beyond that, it could happen. Somebody comes in there and, for some reason, maybe the house gets, whatever.
I understand.
So it's a very future situation.
Any other questions on any of this? Well, we still have a public hearing open, but I just want to make sure the council's okay on this issue in the moment. Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening on this item, particularly with the special assessments, or only with the special assessments? Okay, counsel, why don't we close the public hearing, and if we, just ask staff and council if we have any other issues to discuss?
I would move to close the public hearing for approval of the 2020 special assessments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Counsel, do you want any more clarity on this particular last issue, or anything else on this list that you'd like to ask or question? Mr. Rue, do you have anything else to add?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if there's any other way to, you know, to accomplish assessing future development, if there ever was future development, without having to put an encumbrance on the current property owner in this particular case? And I guess that question goes out to Mr. Rue and also to our city attorney as well.
I want to clarify one thing, too, just to be clear, because there's all kinds of different layering here of when something is due, or if it is due, you can spread it out over 20 years, that kind of thing. So to be really clear, nothing's due and never will be until this land were ever to develop. So it can sell 10 times over the next 100 years, and nothing will ever be due, so there is no tax encumbrance. I understand completely your concern of a legal liability hanging over, so I'd probably want to check with our attorney. And I would think our city, not just you, but any of our residents, would be, I would hope, be willing to issue some, whatever's legal, some formal way of writing it so that the resident is not concerned at resale. But at that point, if you want to go ahead and ask, is there another way to do it, or do you feel comfortable that this is the best way? Maggie, do you want to respond, and then if Mr. Rue wants to as well?
Sure. I mean, I can just respond based on my experience with title searches, is that, you know, an assessment is not an encumbrance on property. It's something to be dealt with by the parties under the terms of a purchase agreement. It doesn't affect the marketability of property. And so often, purchase agreements will have provisions for who pays current assessments, you know, and sometimes it'll say any future assessments are the buyer's responsibility, but it doesn't, I mean, I've never seen a title company say, "We're not going to insure the property because there's deferred assessments on it." It's just sort of another term of the deal, as I understand it.
It just makes it more complicated from my perspective.
Right.
You know, it is, well, no doubt frustrating, but nonetheless, from our perspective, think of precedent as well. Let's just say the lot just wasn't divisible into two, but it really sat on eight acres, and it had the potential of 12 lots. But would we, and then a road comes through, and we need to assess the value of this new improvement on equal land, and here's this little tiny lot, they get their assessment, another little tiny lot, and then there's this eight-acre lot that could become 16 homes. Do we want to find another way for that? And I would say, no, we have a mechanism right now. So in a way, it feels unfortunate when the example falls onto a smaller lot that still nonetheless has the potential of two lots. But again, if you look at the issue from a broader perspective, what does it look like when it's eight acres, or what does it look like when it's 22 acres? I mean, it looks reasonable, and there's also, I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Rue and our attorney and city manager, but been part of this for 24 years, and this is not uncommon for what we've done the last 24 years. I feel like this is probably not uncommon for what we've done the last 100 years and all the cities around us. So I guess I would like to ask that. Is this incredibly common, typical, and reasonable? Somebody, yeah?
I believe it is. This is a process under statute that allows for deferred assessments, and so I apologize, I can't speak specifically to surrounding cities, but, you know, in my experience, I've seen this before.
Counsel, what else? So Brad, does that, Councilmember Aho, is that, do you want to probe more on that?
I mean, I guess I understand where we're coming from. I understand the precedence of, you know, of doing this equally and fairly to all residents, all property owners. I think that we always have to be mindful of that and not singling out any one particular case. It just seems, though, from the property owner's perspective, I understand where she is coming from in terms of having more complications to it and looking, especially if she's already been through this before, and this is another instance of a special assessment on the property that she's owned for not that long of a period of time. So I just wish we had a better way to handle it where it was not impacting her now. Realizing that she's not having to pay anything, it just, the impact is more psychological, I guess, than anything.
You know, I, many people in the city know where I live, but I live on a parcel that has two property IDs, and I've wanted through the years to combine them, thinking it might have improved my, you know, tax structure or something. And in reality, time and time again, I've been told, and I get it, even if one were to combine it, we would view it as divisible, you know? So keep it, keep it two property IDs, because someday, after, long after I'm gone, and maybe after my kids sell it, you know, someone could make two lots out of that. And I bear the consequences of that today, and so I actually do pay this extra lot tax every year in my situation. But, okay. Counsel, if there's nothing else, and staff, if there's nothing else to add?
I just want to-
Oh, Councilmember Freyberg.
I just want to make just a comment that I'm agreeing with Councilmember Aho. I understand, I understand the clarity. But I, then I'm looking at the awkwardness, and I know that's kind of bugging him, too, that there's just not a better way of triggering it. And as I'm sitting here, I don't know what that is. But, boy, it'd be nice sometime if we could figure something out that would be a little more clear, you know, a little easier, you know, on that, where, you know, where you don't, we don't have to have the discussions saying, "Oh, jeez, it's awkward," you know?
I mean, I think we truly all get that, and we're residents of Eden Prairie, too. And so every decision we end up making, you know, we obviously see it through the lens of our own perspective as well, and we hurt on all these situations with our residents. That being said, except for the complexity and the complication and the fear that you feel legitimately for the future if you sell, the reality is you get to walk out of here tonight and never have this impact you a single dime unless you decide to make money on the piece of property. And there are other situations that we've not felt that comfortable sending people out the door, taxing them in a very difficult, you know, perceptual way on their part. So even though I feel for the hurt or the fear, I, we've had situations that we've been burdened much more, I think, at different times. Well, I will entertain a motion on the second part of it, then, adopting the resolution.
I guess I can make it since I made the first one.
I guess you can, then.
I would move to adopt the resolution approving all special assessments presented in the fall of 2020.
Is there a second?
A second.
I think we're missing Kathy Nelson tonight. We're just, we need a fifth voice or something. Kathy, we miss you if you're listening. Any further discussion on special assessments tonight? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Right, passes, unanimous. All right, second public hearing of the evening is the Tiller Corporation. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. The Tiller Corporation is proposing to update their asphalt plant equipment and pollution control equipment and relocate some of their processing and stockpiling areas within their own site. The improvements are meant to increase safety and efficiency and, for energy improvement and for improved circulation and improved stormwater management. The applicant is here tonight, and I know as he did the plan commission, he's going to provide you with an overview of his project and what Tiller is looking at doing. Then we have a public hearing and some land use approvals. There's actually a one-acre parcel, since they've been in operation, they've acquired from Hennepin County that is part of a rezoning here, as well as approving some of the work that they're doing on site. So our applicant is here to provide a presentation, and the staff and the applicant can answer any questions that the council may have.
Welcome, if you'd give your name and address.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Mike Karen. I'm with Tiller Corporation. Tiller Corporation's headquarters are at 7200 Hemlock Lanes, Suite 200 in Maple Grove. Our facility here in your fine city is at 6140 Industrial Boulevard. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to just go through quickly with you, if I could. Excuse me for just a second while I familiarize myself. So what I've got here is I'd like to give you some history of our company, some history about our plant, the proposed improvements. Then I also have slides on the zone changes and the preliminary plat, those I'm not going to cover, I just want them there in case there's questions, we can look at them. And then finally, if the council members have questions, I'm here to answer them. Tiller Corporation was founded in 1946. It's been family-owned since then. Currently, the Sauer family owns a company. We have three divisions, our Barton Sand and Gravel Company, which does about 20 sand and gravel sites throughout the metropolitan area. We, of course, get outside of that. We get close to St. Cloud, close to Malacca, but the majority of the sites are in the metro. Nearly all of our Barton sites have recycling, which we do here in the city. We recycle concrete and asphalt. That's become about 20% to 25% of our sales as far as weight. Commercial asphalt is our division that has the asphalt plants. We have 10 of them. They're, again, scattered around the metropolitan area. And then we have our tank farm in St. Paul. At the tank farm, we store the asphalt cement, which is the glue that holds the asphalt. And the facility is unique in that we can receive the product by barge, rail, and truck. And we store it there and then ship it out to the plants. We employ about 250 people company-wide. That includes our operators, our scale people, our mechanics, electricians. We have an extensive QM for the quality management- have an extensive QM where, for, for the quality management, of course, our, our accounting, et cetera. We're unique in that we're a supply-only company. So you're not going to see us in here bidding on, on your city's street projects. We, we simply supply the, the companies that, that bid them and then, and build them. The, the plant 912 here was actually constructed in, in the 1960s, and, and it's been an asphalt plant as well as it's been doing the, the recycling since probably the 80s. We, we acquired it in, in 2013. And then, of course, we, we added the Hennepin County property in '16. Once, once we gained that property, we decided that, that the main focus of, of what we wanted to do was focus on, on stormwater. When we started talking about that, how we wanted to lay things out, our operations folks said, you know, if we're going to do that now, let's look at how we, we might want to configure the, the plant itself, because it's due to be, be brought up to date. So, so we decided to, to do all of that as, as one project. So with that, I met with city staff in, in 2018, heard their concerns. We've kind of gone back and forth, and, and we've come up with, with a plan that, that I think your, your staff is happy with, and, and we're happy with. And, and that's why we're, we're in front of you tonight. And again, we, we want to improve the, the stormwater. We, we want to get, get better equipment in there and, and improve our, our safety and efficiencies. Just kind of an outline of where we, we sit right now, as far as where we're at in relationship to area streets, the, the trail. You can see the black lines. The, the yellow line is our, our property. The, the black lines are the five different parcels that, that comprise that, that property. And, and we're trying to combine all those. That's, that's why we have the plat. As far as our existing plant, you can see that our scale and, and the buildings are located very, very close to the, the street. Everything is just kind of shoved towards, towards that, that end. And we just thought it would be better, after hearing some concerns from city staff, if we could shift all that further onto the property. So, so just about everything you see there, except the, the unloader, is, is going to be shown on this next one. And you can see how, how we've moved everything further away from the street. Again, it's the same, the same equipment. We've, instead of having two buildings, we, we've gone to three buildings. I'll just point out, there's an MCC building there that stands for Motor Control Center. That's where all of the, the power comes in and then gets sent out to the equipment. AC tanks, that's the asphalt cement, again, the, the glue that, that we use. And the, the baghouse is, is a pollution control equipment for, for the plant. And then, of course, the recycle bins are, are what we feed the recycle into, and the cold feed bins are what the raw aggregates go into. Just kind of the, the current site plan, and I want to kind of point out on this, the, the improvements. First of all, you can see that we're putting in a, a cul-de-sac. Right now, there's no real separation between the, the public roadway and the private driveways. So staff would, felt it was important to, to have that. After thinking about it some, we agreed, so, so we're, we're including the, the cul-de-sac. We're then adding this two stormwater ponds. Currently, there are no stroke stormwater ponds. We kind of try to hold the water back onsite so we can clean up some before it, it discharges. But here now, we've got some, some engineered stormwater ponds. Traffic circulation is set up so that the traffic can come in and then circle around. And as it circles around, it can either go straight ahead where I just put up the, the last arrow and get to a stockpile area, or it can go across the scales and, and get the asphalt. If it goes to the stockpile area, as those trucks come back out, then they come back across the scales. And then, of course, they leave the site. Much better flow than, than, than what we've got right now. And then finally, over along Eden Vale Boulevard and Indian Chief, and, and the trail ahead, there's kind of three things that come together there. Staff kind of wanted to see if we couldn't do some screening there. And since we are going to be removing trees for the, the stormwater pond, we decided that would be a good spot for the tree replacement area. And, and that way, we, we can accomplish screening and move our stockpiles away from that. So, so that way, from, from at least that vantage point, it, it's going to be much better. The next slides are all about the rezoning and the plating, so I'm just going to keep those. But I guess finally, I just want to show you a picture of our blane facility. This, this facility was built in, in 2000, and then in 2016, we, we did some, some improvements. And essentially, we, we expect our, our Eden Prairie facility to look very similar to this. Not exactly, but close. And with that, I'll, I'll conclude my presentation and answer questions if, if you prefer.
Counsel, anything before we open up the public hearing?
I would just have a couple of questions. So in terms of modernizing the, your facilities and equipment, we don't get a lot of complaints or anything about noise, but I'm just curious as, as to noise and, and dust control, things like that, that you would expect from an operation like this. Are those going to be improved with the, with the improvements that you're making to the equipment and the site?
Good question, and, and I'm glad you, you asked that. So, so the, the dryer that's there now is fairly quiet, but the new dryer that, that's going in is one of the quietest that, that, that's made. That would be one of the noisiest pieces as far as the asphalt plant goes. And then as far as our, our crushing equipment, that's done, you know, we'll, we'll get enough, enough material into process, and, and the crews will come in and operate there for, for two to three weeks. And we try to time that out so that, that we're keeping it spread fairly far apart, as well as making sure that when we do get them there, we can keep them somewhat screened by, by other stockpiles so the, the noise doesn't travel. And since we've operated there, we have not had complaints. And when I talk to planning staff, that's, that's their, their agreement, that, that they just have not received complaints there.
Good. Thank you.
Are there ever times when trucks are backing up? Because we understand, again, if you haven't had complaints, then you haven't. But one of the complaints that comes out of that area, a couple of the businesses I think that are near you have trucks that go in reverse a lot and go beep, beep, you know, that kind of a thing. Do your trucks ever do that?
So, so first of all, again, it's our customer trucks. We, we don't have trucks that actually haul there. What, what we try to do is if, if there's a, a situation like that, we'll deal with our, our customer directly and ask them to deal with their, their drivers directly. As we're going through this whole planning process, I did sit down with, with Niels, who's directly across the, the, the street from us. We talked about some of his concerns, shared the plans that we had for the cul-de-sac and stuff. And he thinks the improvements we're making with, with the circulation will address some of the concerns that he's had in the past about our trucking.
Good. Counsel others? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing up, and then if you have more questions at some point, you can, if you take a seat, we'll have more questions, we'll call you back up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on the Tiller Corporation Plant 912 project? Okay, counsel, let's see. Are we ready maybe to make the entire motion? And then if we have questions, we can continue to talk. So go ahead, Councilmember Narayan.
I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to industrial I-GEN on 1.09 acres and public to industrial I-GEN on 4.49 acres. Adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of five parcels into one lot and one outlot on 13.21 acres. Direct, direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendation and council conditions.
Second.
Staff, I just have a, a question, a little bit on the side of this, and maybe it's Mr. Ru, maybe it's over with Mr. Getcho. But is this particular plat part of what we might see in 50 years if we were to look at the redevelopment of this whole area up there from industrial into some type of high-density residential or something else? Is this part of that whole area?
You know, actually, I'd let Ms. Jeremiah weigh in on that, but I, I know that the Midwest asphalt operation is something where we've talked about it being a non-conforming use and it being a future redevelopment site. But I, if she wants to weigh in on, on this particular area, which is very close to that, as you know, we spend our workshop talking about our, our five-year plan, so.
Your Honor, council members, yes, we discussed, we don't foresee any imminent redevelopment in this area. However, the idea of consolidating smaller properties into larger lots is a positive for future redevelopment.
Great. Okay. And just to add in, the city would never take initiative on that. It's only in the years to come if, you know, buyers and the property changes hands several times. And then we're looking at where we see the city being long after all of us are gone up here, 2050, 60, 70. I was just curious if this was part of that long-term thought planning process. So thank you.
And zoning it all industrial also is helpful in that regard.
Right. Counsel, any other comments or discussions? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Thank, yeah, thank you for what you're doing to improve the area and the project. Looks great.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have one final public hearing. Code amendment for towers and antennas. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, Mayor, we do. This is very much a housekeeping item. Because we're, we're updating Chapter 6 and Chapter 11, the Chapter 11 zoning ordinance part needs a public hearing. But there was a 2020 FCC ruling and updated definitions related to approvals for cell towers and antennas. And this, there's some new language we needed to put into our code related to allowing these facilities in our city. So it's very much a minor
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping update to Chapter 6 and Chapter 11.
Nonetheless, when we have ordinance changes, we do always invite the public comment. So this is a public hearing. Counsel, anything before I open it up that you'd like to question? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the counsel on the code amendment for towers and antennas issue may come forward. And seeing none, counsel, is, what's your pleasure? Anyone like to make a motion?
I, go ahead. Oh, I can do it. I would, let's see, move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 6, Section 6.03, relating to right-of-way permits, and City Code, Chapter 11, Section 11.06, relating to towers and antennas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Payment of claims. Any items that you wish to question the expenditures? Okay, is there a motion?
I move the approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freyberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, we're down to the report of city manager. We have, I find this very exciting. I think the rest of the council does as well. Some use of some CARES Act funds. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Absolutely. I'm, I'm very pleased to bring forward a proposal of, of a grant for CARES Act funds for two of our major nonprofits in Eden Prairie, the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce and the Eden Prairie Foundation. So the city is able to provide grants to assist our nonprofits for COVID-related expenses due to the COVID-19 public emergency. And both the foundation and the chamber submitted application material for those funds, and the city will also follow up with documentation. But I, I am pleased to come forward and request that the council authorize $27,850 for the Eden Prairie Foundation and $59,850 for the Chamber of Commerce. And as I said, in the packet, you could see that they submitted a paperwork showing the eligible expenses that these funds would be applied to. And I believe each of them are going to give a 15-minute presentation on
Five zero, you said?
No, I see our, the president of our chamber and, and head of the foundation are, are here as well tonight, but they do not need to speak.
But they may, if they wish. I just want to add a comment. People are always curious, correctly, accurately, where's this money coming from? And is it tax dollars? And so it is, in the big, big picture, it's federal tax dollars. But the CARES Act money was budgeted and dedicated and sent out. Cities have to justify it. They have to be able to actually show on a list that they actually spent the money on COVID-related expenses. This amount that we are helping out with the chamber and the foundation was not money that we had budgeted. If it's not spent, I'm not sure what happens, but it doesn't go towards something else that we're missing. So this is a really great opportunity to assist two organizations in our city that I think covers a whole wide swath of our city. If you think of all of our business community and our social service funding community, I mean, what's left? Schools and city, but we have that fairly covered. But these are two particular organizations that suffered greatly during this COVID environment, and we need them to survive for our future. We need a strong Chamber of Commerce, and we need a strong Eden Prairie Community Foundation. So this, these monies will allow that to, to help to preserve their viability in the years going forward. So I'm very, very excited about this. Prior to the motion, would either of you wish to say anything? Again, you don't have to, but you're looking at each other. Do you want to come up and, you can't hold hands or anything, but I mean, you could come up together and stand if you wished, or you, you don't have to. Okay. Mr. Pat Mulquenee, the president of the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and council members and, and city staff. I think, you know, in our application, we outlined the impact of COVID. And as you all know, businesses have been greatly impacted, and we are a business association. So much like the foundation, we do a lot of events. And with the restrictions and not being able to do that as well, it becomes very problematic to make up dollars. So these will be utilized to help us with our mission, which really is to generate and, and help support our local economy, which of course helps the city and the school district and everyone else involved. So on behalf of the Eden Prairie Chamber, thank you.
You're welcome. And we're so pleased to be able to help. Mr. Mark Weber, the director of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation.
Your Honor and counsel, I just want to say that we work with about 100 nonprofits in Eden Prairie, so you can be assured that having a sustainable and viable community foundation lifts up the entire nonprofit sector in Eden Prairie through granting that we do and collaboration and other means. So you're right, you're lifting the entire nonprofit sector of Eden Prairie in doing this, so thank you.
You're welcome. Our community is filled with many, many incredible people, and I mean that, we all know that, who contribute so much to the life and vitality of this community. But it'd be hard to find two volunteers, not volunteers who are somewhat paid, but nonetheless, based on the hours you put in, probably a lot of volunteer, two people that give as much as Pat Mulquenee and Mark Weber. So I, we need your organizations to survive this crisis, this pandemic, and we need you in your roles to survive this. So I think this is a, a great opportunity to help with that. I know Councilmember Narayan wished to have a moment to speak. He's been the past chair of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say, oh, thank you to the staff. It's hard to see. Thank you to the staff for selecting these two organizations, like Mayor said. And if you look at the chamber focusing on the business side of it, and the foundation focusing on the nonprofit, and both of them were struggling with the COVID, and it's awesome pick. For transparency, like Mayor was saying earlier, I was the board member
For transparency, like Mayor was saying earlier, I was the board member and the chair last two years, and it's the foundation aspect, let me speak a little bit, I know quite a lot. Because of COVID, that foundation not able to raise fund to its operational and granting. Two major events that we had to cancel. One is EPGIVE and Brewfest. Brewfest, usually there will be around 750 people attend, one of the celebrated event, and we do gain some money from that, and we could not do that. Because of that and other things, that the foundation has a shortfall of around 56, 53,000, something X dollars there. While all this happening, foundation still step up with the COVID-19, and we started a fund, and we raised around $56,000 and give to prop, prop shop, mental health issues, and many other things when everything going on. In overall, in the last five years, the foundation contributed million-plus dollars in philanthropy and its own fund from donors, advice fund, from community impact fund. So think about a million dollars. We were the conduit to the million, facilitator for that million dollars, and it's all went to the Eden Prairie because of the foundation. And the chamber side, I just want to say, as many of you know, I'm a business, small business owner, am a business executive and entrepreneur, and my heart is in the business a lot of ways. And I know, Pat, your organization also suffered through the COVID-19. Now, you were saying earlier that you cannot even get CARES Act fund through the federal funding because the way that you structured. So I'm really glad for these both organizations getting this fund and want to say thank you to the staff selecting them. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Narayan. Anybody else, or should we entertain a motion? Is there someone that would make a motion? Go ahead. Councilmember Freiberg.
I'll do a motion. I'll move to authorize the use of CARES Act funds for grants to the Eden Prairie Foundation and the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce. Authorize up to $27,850 for the foundation and $59,850 for the Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second that.
Second. All right. Any further discussion or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Right. I'm happy for both of you. Congratulations, both organizations, both of you individually as well, but your, the organizations that you represent, thank you. Thanks for all you do. Thanks for what the organizations do as well. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
None. I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Or second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? This meeting is adjourned.